For our freedoms, we enjoy in this land of America, we pray for those that are less fortunate, those who are hurting and those who have heartache, we pray for them and their families. We think of those in the Rossville, Indiana area that lost two people, and we pray for them and their families. Just be with us today as we make decisions with the county. Grant us wisdom. Make decisions that are proper in your sight. I ask you all in the name of Christ.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Have we all had an opportunity to review the minutes? And if we did, I'll entertain a motion to pass those?
Entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Yeah, seconded. Go on, favor.
Aye.
Three, zero. Financials. We had payroll of $259,000, $212.27, and $255,138.70, and claims amounting $996,729.27. Entertain a motion to pass?
Motion to pass the payroll line of claims.
Seconded.
That. Go on, favor, aye?
Aye.
Sheriff? You're not spreading salt today, were you?
Yeah. I was spreading salt the one day in our parking lot.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I mean, this guy was on vacation. So, good morning. Make this short and sweet. This morning, we have 80 inmates in jail. Thirty-seven of those are pre-trial Superior, 25 are pre-trial Circuit. There are five F-6, five DOC. DOC just recently was shut down as far as intakes on inmates due to COVID and obviously the weather. So, that opened back up, and so that's kind of helped us get our numbers down just a little bit in that aspect. Construction update. They were working pretty rigorously the beginning of the week last week, and then stopped on Thursday and Friday, obviously. They're back at it again this morning out there doing masonry work and such on the new portion that's being out there. So, they're in full swing as we speak on that. The only other thing I had is in regards to the snowstorm, there was a lot of communication, a lot of people making decisions, and I think that for the most part, we were prepared, even though it wasn't as bad as some of them we've had in the past. I felt like all the departments, especially the county highway, did an exceptional job of staying in communication with all first responders and whatnot to have actions in place in the event that we needed to get places and those type of things. So, I thought that everything was handled very well there, and for the most part, we didn't get overburdened by calls and those type of things. People made smart choices, stayed home when they needed to stay home. Obviously, schools being down those days helped reduce traffic and any issues with school buses and those type of things. So, for the most part, I felt like everything was really good. I think we're going to follow up with maybe an after-action plan and kind of what did we do good? What do we, can we improve for the future? And that's the goal, because it's hard to predict things for the future. So, appreciate all the decisions that had to be made and the people involved, so.
Thanks for keeping us informed, too. It was nice to know what the deputies were doing and seeing, and made it a lot easier to know what was going on.
Good deal. I don't have anything else unless you have any questions.
How many accidents did you guys have?
I don't know the total number. I could get that for you, but we had a few slide-offs, nothing major, you know, each shift. It was mostly cars stuck, those type of things. I heard somebody else lost another mailbox, but other than that, we're good. But if you want that number, I'll give it to you.
Yeah, whatever.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Scott.
And Sean is not here. He's not running a truck today because we're a little short on drivers. Nate, do you want to give a statement for the highway?
I can certainly try. I'll say, sorry about all.
You'd be up after him anyway, so.
Yeah, so I'll do my best.
We're not going through both those books this morning, are we?
Looks like the bridge study.
That's exactly right. So, more just of object lesson there is what the bridge inspection studies look like. Just kudos to the guys, a lot of the drivers, certainly for myself. I'm not out there fighting the snow, but I know the guys did the hard work to get out there and deal with the storm. Certainly, we didn't get as much to know as early as we had anticipated, but I know Sean was working hard on getting an action plan together. I think it's the first time I've seen, when I came back at the office, seeing all of the first responders out for a little pow-wow ahead of the storm. So, certainly, there was a lot of preparation done by the county highway department in being ready, stationing trucks out to make sure that we responded in time. So, kudos to the guys. I know there was a lot of hours that we put in. There was going to be a lot of overtime, some overnights for a few of the drivers. So, I'm glad to see that we didn't really have any of the issues that we expected, and the snow came in under the anticipated totals. Eight inches is a whole lot better than 18, so thank you very much for that. So, no. Other than that, Connor Jackson would be here, but I think he's on quarantine for right now. He's got sick employees as well. So, I just gave Colin a copy of the agreement with PCI, so maybe hopefully later, we'll be able to take some action on that. Connor gave me a quick update for the highway garage. We should expect some final design on the pre-engineered shell of the building here in the next week or so. Hopefully, we'll be able to go out to bid with that going into March. We're doing regularly scheduled progress meetings with the design team, so that's going to three-week rotation right now as far as getting updates on the status. I think our building projects go in along pretty well from a planning stage standpoint. Other than that, I didn't have anything else for the highway department in general. For myself, let's see. Got a request from Zach Rubel. He had requested a permit from the county for a 2022 triathlon bike course. Use of the county right-of-way for the event on June 11th. It's a swim, bike, and run race. The bike portion uses county road courses. He's got an outline on the link that I provided you earlier on. Be an 8:00 AM start, some no real road closures. He's working with the county sheriff's office for traffic control at some intersections. They won't have any permanent structures in the right-of-way. The reason I bring it up to the commissioners is there's no real process for event permits within the county, so I bring it up to you kind of as a special permission granted by the commissioners.
We did this last year.
Exactly. So, it came to us. There is a certificate of insurance, so it protects us from any liability if there is an issue with someone using the county right-of-way for an event like this. So, they provide us with that. So, I think Lisa, you have that already, but just coming with a recommendation for approval on that event.
I'll make that motion to accept it.
Yep, seconded.
Go on, favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
On the countywide bridge inspection, that's the two big binders that I have here, part one, part two. Received those drafts from Butler, Furman, and Seifert just last month. Started a review. Obviously, it's a real page-turner to go through it. The summary documents you have in front of you are some of the updates that they have, recommendations for updates to our bridge asset management plan, as well as some load rating and tonnage changes on a couple of bridges. As with anything, you change consulting engineers, there's different professional opinions on certain things. So, the summary of updates under B on my notes are the bridges that we've actually taken postings off. Some of them come because of the steel arch structures, cover differences in the calculations for the load ratings, also just adjustments as far as how you want to do the modeling of the load rating. Jonathan Olson wasn't able to be here for this meeting to go through that. I think it would probably just delay the meeting more than anything. But we had five bridges that went from postings to no postings. Those are typically dealing with the emergency vehicle load ratings, so it just becomes the size of those. That's specific to the ladder trucks from the Bluffton Fire Department. So, once we did some recalculation of those, those come off. Others came down. Probably the most notable would be the historic select bridge up on 500 West, that Bridge 112 that we redid. Went from a 30-ton down to 16-ton. That came down to how the structure actually was done. It wasn't an issue with what rehab was done. It was a miscalculation as far as how much it should have gone up, actually. So, it should have never gone up to 30-ton, but it didn't really affect us. It's not a truck route. It's just simply a posting issue for us. So, it should stay at the 16-ton load limit for quite some time. So, other than that, Bridge 65 came down from no posting down to 24-ton. I was surprised it wasn't posted before, and we looked at it with special care with this time, and it's on my rotation for improvement. So, I'm looking to study that and get it into replacement hopefully in '24 to '25 timeframe. So, that's just an update on that. I'm probably not going to go page by page, but you've got a summary document. If you've got bridges that you're concerned about in your areas that you'd like to look at, I gave Blake two copies of the actual select reviews of them. I think it's about a 5, 10-page document. So, if you want some that you're curious about why they are or aren't in the rotation, let me know. I can certainly make those available to you. Bridge 403 was scheduled for bid opening on Thursday, February 2nd. With the courthouse closed and the snow coming, we delayed the bid opening. Then we'll actually have a bid opening this Tuesday, so I won't have any information for that until your next commissioner meeting. So, I do have a couple of contractors that are definitely looking at it, so I'm expecting three to four bids on that project. So, hopefully, it'll be at the same time again, but it'll be an e-bid. Murray Stormwater Project. Project will be advertising for bidding Thursday, February 10th, with bid opening on March 3rd. I've got the summary just front and second page of those. It's a 30-page plan set. That is part of our Indian Finance Authority grant, a SWIFT grant that we received. Close to an 80% or 90% grant-funded project, but it is, because it's federal dollars, there's some requirements of wage rates we have to meet with that project. So, I'm going through that. But it'll go out to bid on Thursday. So, another item, note for presentations. I was for County Road 200 South from Clark-Huja Highway, Tuesday, Route 1. Think I missed it on this note. Presentation was on February 1st. I gave that to N.D. Central Office via Zoom Teams meeting. I anticipate hearing a response back from the state. They posted something about early March. It may be mid to late March, depending on when they finally make the selections, but I think the Northeast Indiana was one of the last to present. So, I've heard they've been doing interviews for probably three weeks before we had ours. But we'll see what the results are for that. And other than that, I didn't have any right-of-way dedications. I know it's on my note for this, but do you have some?
I might just give you some.
Okay, so you've got three or four there?
Five.
Okay. So, I'd recommend approval on those right-of-ways. I think those are my sources.
Seconded.
Go on, favor, aye?
Aye.
So, I'll race through that, but appreciate it. Any questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Back to my desk. Workers' compensation renewal. Who do we have here to represent that? General insurance?
I don't see anybody.
Anybody? Okay. So, it's just us?
I think we just agreed that the quotes that they submitted, we would stick with...
Keep them, yeah.
Yeah, Bliss McKnight had a quote of $77,160 annually, and I've had $80,000 by night.
Gotcha. And Dan had submitted that to us. I'd say, okay, perfect.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept.
Seconded.
Favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero. Both in there?
Mike.
Good morning, Mike.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mike.
Today, I would like to present to you the annual report 2021 for Bluffton Now and the health of downtown. So, just wanted to give a kind of a brief overview. Each one of you received the annual report, the email packet. So, I don't want to go through page by page, but just to focus on some highlights. Again, Bluffton Now is an organization focused on the revitalization of downtown Bluffton. You can see our executive team, board of directors, and part-time staff. Mentioned there, it's a wide-ranging group of people, all very active and excited about the improvements being done in downtown. Summary from financially, our organization was able to meet our aggressive budget last year through a successful Burfest fundraiser, as well as a dinner fundraiser that we had, and allowed us to jump into the downtown pathways project, which is the improvement of five alleyways in downtown Bluffton, in which we are currently 61% funded. Having that strong budget and that strong year last year really allowed us to move forward, get engineering started, do the work that was necessary to continue with the improvements that we're doing. And we're already very excited about what will be a huge success with our Burfest coming up here in a month. So, go over a couple accomplishments for the year. We had our community reinvestment program, which is our downtown grant that we partnered with the city of Bluffton on. There were nine successful applicants, and it brought in 187% return on investment for the city's investment of $150,000. Highlights of that project were upstairs apartments and greatly needed improvements to our downtown buildings. We'll go over some of the recent successes here in a little bit when we get to our stats. We had several successful events highlighted by the second year of the Part of the City Market, as well as our first set of summer concert series. The events brought hundreds of people into downtown, and we're very excited about seeing Saturday mornings with the market become a busier time for our downtown businesses, as well as the evening times during our concerts, bringing in more people than what would normally be there. The businesses definitely are seeing the boost. We're excited to see those foot-traffic drivers continue to work and continue to grow what we're doing in downtown. If we look at the stats, a couple of quick highlights. We're 91% occupied on the first floor of downtown. We have 69% in second and third floor occupancy. Our biggest upgrade was on second-floor occupancy rates. That was due to some downtown apartments being developed. Recently, had one that you could walk through. They're amazing. It's a great opportunity, and are excited about seeing those. And we have 100 businesses in downtown. The big number of the year is that the assessed value minus the hospital-owned properties in downtown is $10 million, just a little over $10 million, which is up $1.7 million in two years without a single new construction project. That is pretty amazing. That alone shows that what is Bluffton Now doing in the health of downtown is improving because the downtown buildings are going up in value. Our marketing information is shown there. Again, we're using all the available platforms, continuing to grow and to learn how to use them and how the better get the word out about our activities. We have some new members on our marketing team that are helping us to continue to push forward with that and help get the information out so that our events can attract more people and that we can be more successful with what we're doing in downtown. We would like to also go through a list, a very amazing list of businesses that opened this year in downtown. Leading the list is Toppings, the Hard Dip Ice Cream Shop, the Nutrition Loft on East Market Street, The Studio, which is its next-door neighbor. Both of those are located in a building that last year was scheduled for demolition. Thanks for some crafty work and a CRP application. Now that building is occupied and has two successful businesses in it. We introduced Balanced Massage Therapy and Body Works, Youth for Christ, The Lounge, The Garage, which is a youth activity center for teenagers, and the old Dex Garage, and Renovate Counseling, which is our last addition at the end of the year in a former hospital building. So, exciting to see everybody coming into downtown, the successes, which leads us to what we're looking for in the future, which is to continue the CRP program for this year, hoping for a very successful round of applicants. We've received initial applications. We're looking through that right now. Our events, we're hoping to grow, to continue to bring more people into downtown. And our full focus will be to continue to get into the construction phase of the downtown pathways project, to bring that up. So, with that, and as if there is any questions in regards to the annual report, and I'll make a brief notice about a way of participating in the pathways project.
I'm good.
So, Bluffton Now would like to formally request the commissioners consider to participate financially, have the county participate financially in the pathways project. We'll come back with a more specific request at your next meeting to continue this conversation forward. We do see this as a great opportunity for the city, the county, and private donors to all come together and help make this project a reality. So, we'd like to have that conversation. If there's any other further questions in regards to downtown, things are hopping. We're excited about the warm weather coming. Get everybody out in the mount and get the snow ready.
No, you've done a great job with this. Thank you. Thank you for providing everything you had here.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
The regional elected officials agreement. Kim?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Thanks for coming.
My name is Kim Temple. I'm the Senior Director of Business Services for Northeast Indiana Works. Today, I'm here representing the president and CEO, Edmund O'Neill, who is unable to be here today. The purpose of my visit is to really just get the elected officials agreement re-signed. It's a three-year term is typically what it is. Northeast Indiana Works is a nonprofit organization. We oversee the Work One offices, so this agreement is to really just continue those services that we offer here in Wells County at no So, the purpose of, again, with my visit today is to get the signature on the agreement. I did want to provide some statistics for you of the work that we have done here in Wells County over the last couple of years. First and foremost is the training funding that we've provided to Wells County, both in employers and in individuals. It's just a little under $700,000 that we've offered, servicing 13 different companies that received funding for that, and then individuals that have received training assistance. We have assisted 74 employers with recruitment activities that created 1,339 job orders and 112 referrals.
I have.
In addition to that, we obviously in support of economic development projects, so we offer letters of support of workforce development support to businesses that are either expanding or relocating here in Wells County. So, ultimately, our goal is to continue those services that we provide at no cost with the support of the commissioners.
Kevin was on this board for a good number of years and served in that capacity. Good work, you know, great for our region, great for our county.
Yeah, I can certainly, you know, give kudos to not only the work that Northeast Indiana Works does, but specifically to what Kim does. Part of the other thing that she didn't mention is we do, as part of our BRE visits, which is our business retention and expansion business that we do with companies. We try to get to three to four every other month. Part of those visits do also include Kim, as well as Purdue University and their technical assistance program, the State of Indiana, and IEDC. And this last year, we had representatives from the State Department of Ag. And so, part of the reason why we are so successful in helping our companies, both with recruitment and getting them as much funding as possible, is making them aware of those programs. And Kim does both a really great job of getting the program information out there that we send, the conversations that we have, but then also that one-on-one support that comes to the companies when they're having questions, whether it's through training plans that they need to have to get those grants, or just providing other information specific to training programs that companies can access from a funding perspective. So, great assets. Love having them as part of our community, and I think it's an organization that certainly benefits our companies, but our citizens.
Thanks, Jim. I'd make a recommendation. We should sign and support the...
I'll second that.
Go on, favor.
Aye.
Three, zero.
Thank you.
Three, thank you. Dan, we already accepted that, but if...
I am extremely sorry. I thought this was 9:30 like it normally is.
He switched it up.
The second meeting of the month is 9:00.
That's okay. We're good. Got you covered.
I am so sorry.
Did you have anything for them to sign, Dan?
No, I just...
Okay.
Okay.
They had already given approval and everything. I was just going to actually deliver the stuff. So, I mean, again, I am so sorry.
Well, we'll take it. No deal.
I was just attending. I said, I told 9 o'clock, and they're all sitting here laughing at me. I know typically, I'm not typically late, so I feel horrible.
No worries.
Got you covered.
Unacceptable.
Monthly reports?
We have Wells on Wheels Fourth Quarter Reimbursement Claim to Sign, and it's signed by the president. It is for reimbursement for $188,184 for the fourth quarter.
Make a motion to allow the president to sign for that?
I second that. I do have requests that now that COVID slowed down a little bit, that they show up to present that. I know that they continue to say COVID's an issue, but every other department showing up, I think they need to show up to get those formal requests in.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Absolutely.
So, go on, favor.
Aye.
Okay, three, zero.
The investment policy that was approved by you last month as the Board of Finance now needs to be approved as the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. Yeah. I'll entertain that motion, then.
Motion to approve the finance that Mrs. Peeters showed us last time.
Investment policy.
I'll second that.
Investment policy. Go on, favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero.
Aye.
Three, zero. Tax sales on untold property. What do we have on this?
The property on West Wyland Street.
Yes, we have an update.
We have an update on the West.
We are still within a redemption period. We can move to a tax deed come up late March. We did have two people reach out to us interested in purchasing that, got in contact with SRI, who runs the taxes, and they suggested that if we wanted to go back to selling the tax sale certificate, we could do that, but we have to go through that procedure that we already went through, and I don't know why they didn't show up the first time to do it. I don't have any numbers on what they're willing to pay. The face value of the certificate is known, but so when these individuals came to me, I just suggested to them, well, let's talk numbers, and then if we want to move away from all the work that would go into a tax deed and then having to sell the property later on, that would be an option. I just haven't heard anything from them yet, but we're still in that period where they could still come in. We might decide to switch course, and it may resolve it with a less cost to the county that way.
So, this keeps informed which way we're going, or what?
Yeah, exactly.
Was that redemption period over?
I was going to say that it ends, what, the end of March?
End of March.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Colin. Anything else on that? Austin Rescue Vehicle Updates. I think right now, we're going to put out an RFP, correct?
Right. Briefly, we submitted a proposal to the Indiana Bond Bank. We did receive a reply back. However, we did have a local bank interested in submitting a quote. To do that, we need to do an RFP. Colin's got the documents ready to go. We'll work on the timeline based on the dates of redemption and timeframe that we need to meet. We filled out, whatever we do on the RFP needs to mirror or match what we're doing with the bond, that we have apples for apples on numbers and timeframe. So, he's going to work on that. I would make a recommendation, we approve that RFP today, that it can be posted in the paper and meet the deadlines, that we can either act on it next meeting, or at least by the first meeting of March.
Because the deadline's 90 days.
90 days. It's the 31st of March. So, we want to give time that we can close on whatever we need to do with a proper timeframe that you guys aren't in the lurch.
I second that motion. I second that motion. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, zero. Do you have any comments for that?
I don't.
Okay. Absolutely. You're welcome. Any miscellaneous business? Are we ready for other comments?
Did we want to talk about the remote policy at all?
Have we seen a final draft of that? I know it got kicked around.
You sent us something yesterday.
I have three options.
That's what I thought, yeah.
So we just need to decide on which option to go with. None at all, no employee request, qualified employee request, or open employee request. So I just need to hear from you guys what you want to do in that.
Yeah, my thoughts, and I shared this with Colin, is that all the positions within the county or people that applied for those positions knew that they were at location. They weren't remote. So I think that it should be on an emergency basis only.
Agreed.
As a discretion of the county, not a request by person.
Agreed. I think, yeah, it needs to be that way.
So it'd be coming from the department head to us to make that request?
And it would only be approved if it was an emergency or a pandemic or something?
When you say emergency, do you mean an emergency as determined by the board here? Because if you do that, then it's just, it's a county-wide call that you all make. If a department head is coming to you, you're saying they would have the ability to request that their employees work remotely? Or they're requesting that an emergency be declared?
So we don't have remote employment in the county.
Correct.
So I don't know why we would have a request for remote employment in the county, unless there was a emergency, some type of EMA, emergency.
Yeah, FMLA or something, health-related.
Okay, so like qualified, they can request it, but for extraordinary circumstances?
Correct.
All right, I can put that together.
Then I think we should review it until you get the final copy next week.
Yeah, I don't see final draft.
Maybe make that decision next meeting.
Anything else?
Nope.
Please?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Chief, please.
Donnie, come forward.
So the county approved some barricades to be put out at premier flats. I'm here to question why them barricades are still in place. The original agreement was those were supposed to remain through construction. Construction is complete as we have done the final inspections and given the occupancy permits. I'm asking at this time that barricades be removed.
I'll make a comment in regard to this. I received a phone call last Monday at five minutes till nine o'clock to attend a nine o'clock meeting in regards to this particular subject, which caught me off guard, and I had a doctor's appointment in Fort Wayne to attend the meeting. I think Mike might have attended it.
I did. I did.
Jeff, I don't know if you did or not. I've investigated projects like this, actually projects this developer did. I want more time to investigate it because based on projects they've done, Fort Wayne, West Lafayette, Brownsburg, I believe, there is one access point, which you have off of State Road One, and they have no other access at all. So I want to get a determination because we're not hindering the access point off of State Road One. But that being said, we have minutes regarding the approval and the percentage of occupancy based on the closure. When Tamara and Kevin and I gave approval, Mike Jr. brought that to us. I'm not sure if the message didn't get to the city. I apologize at that point, and we approved it and didn't hear anything until this point. The barricades are not similar to what was under construction with Jeff and the project. They were concrete, but I think they call them Jersey barricades or whatever. But since the asphalt's been down, the, if you want to call them barricades, have sandbags on them that can be removed in about 20 seconds. So I want more time for discussion at some point in private. Don't need to do it in a public session, but I think we just need to get together privately, so.
I would encourage that meeting.
Absolutely.
It's a safety concern having a lot of people there, and I think we need to access it. I encourage that meeting, sir.
Yep. Very good. Thank you.
Blake?
Sir?
I checked what we've been sitting here for your statistics for traffic accidents. During the period of the snowstorm, we had two personal or property damage accidents and five slide-offs and zero personal injury accidents.
Zero personal injury.
Yep. So I think that shows the testament to people to make their own choice to stay home when it's dangerous. And again, we put messages out. You guys approved the levels that we're at. We try to distribute that message as public safety to get that in the hands of the people. But here, as a suggestion, I would like people to be prepared actions to keep them in.
And the mailbox, it was a victim of the slide-off, not during the snowstorm.
Correct. It was the third one, correct.
$600 worth of mailboxes in three weeks.
I would have a few comments I want to bring to the commissioners' attention.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Appreciate you guys giving me a few moments to present a few concerns that I've had. I was in this very room.
How about you just tell, state your name and all that.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. My name is Chandler Gerber. I am here in the capacity of a PETA BOA member, Property Tax Board of Appeals for Wells County. I was appointed to that board here roughly five weeks ago or so. I was appointed in the morning and then was contacted in the early afternoon by the assessor and told that we had seven days. I had to sift through about 350 pages of testimony and documentation. I had hours of recorded testimony that I had to listen to. I did that. I spent the next seven days, late into the night, 1:00, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, listening to hours of previous testimony, things like that, studying up so that I would be aware of all the ins and outs and things I needed to be aware of. We got to the meeting in this very room, and we had spent, when I say "we," I say myself and the other two board members, Larry McChesney is a gentleman, I believe, from Allen County, and Judy Affolder, I believe, is from Adams County. The three of us on the board were in this room along with Kelly Herman, the assessor. And we were going over five different appeals that had spent the last year working their way up to our, up to our desk essentially. Brandon Harnish represented, you know, his property, but the other four taxpayers were not here. So the five of us were in this room. We spent three and a half hours debating, talking about, going over the different, you know, ins and outs of tax assessments and the process, et cetera, et cetera. At the end of three and a half hours, I turned to the assessor and I said, "I believe it's come out here and through my involvement reading the law that the assessor's office has to use the lowest approach." There are three approaches when assessing. The assessors can use the income approach for business properties or rental properties, that type of thing. They can use the comparable sales approach, which they would just find, obviously comparable sales, and say, "Here's the value." Or they can use the replacement cost approach, which is you figure out what it would cost to build a new building. Those three approaches are what the assessor can choose from in assessing, and by law, they are mandated to use the lowest of the three of those. And that was clarified by Ms. Herman in that hearing. And so after three and a half hours, I made the motion. We had two different properties in Wells County built in the last year, year and a half, storage unit facilities, and the average price of those was $22 a square foot. And so I said, in concurrence with the law, I said, "I'd make the motion that we lower." And we were going to, the first property we did was Mr. Harnish's. So we said, "$22 a square foot." Now, we have to go a little beyond that because there's some gray area that the assessors have a lot of latitude and can do some other things. So I clarified further so there was no confusion, and I said, "They also can depreciate per the IRS depreciation schedules for commercial buildings." You know, obviously, a brand-new building is in much better condition than a used store that's 35 years old, and so they shouldn't be treated as equal because there's differences. The last thing is that the assessor's offices can use what's called a market factor. And that is essentially, they could set the square footage price at five and set a market factor of 10, and so the actual square footage price is 50, not five. But they can say, "Well, no, I lowered it to five," and leave out the market factor, and it throws the whole thing off. So I clarified the third point. I said, "I want no funding business. There needs to be a market factor of one so that it truly is 22 a square foot, depreciated to your construction, and there's a market factor of one." To my right, where Larry McChesney sat, he said, "I'm going to abstain from this vote. I'm still sifting through this." Judy Affolder said, "I second it." The motion was passed, and we moved on to the next one. The next three motions were identical. They were also supposed to be set at 22 a square foot, market factor of one, depreciated to date of construction. On the last, the fifth owner, I jokingly turned to Larry and I said, "Well, Larry, it's your turn to make a motion." He kind of laughed and said, "Okay, I make the same motion," and he walked through the motion, identical to the other four that I had made. I seconded that motion. Judy voted third. We all stood up, chatted for a few minutes in this room, and we left. And I thought, "Well, boy, that was a successful morning. Took four hours, but we got it done." From that point, what was supposed to have happened was notices go out through the auditor's office, through the board. We sign off on the minutes. We sign off on the agreements, et cetera, et cetera. So this would have been most likely, you know, I don't know for sure, probably a couple of week process to get all this stuff done and sent out. Four days later, on Friday of that same week, my phone starts blowing up about 1:00. And taxpayers were calling me saying, "What is going on? I just got my new assessment in the mail, and it's actually higher than what it was when I went into the appeal." And it was already higher from that point than when we thought it was. And I said, "Well, that can't be right." I said, "I sat there for four hours. I made four of the five motions. I know it was supposed to be said. We all talked about it. That can't be right." Probably 20 minutes passed, and Kelly Herman calls my phone and says that she has taxpayers calling her very upset because they've got the new assessments. And I said, "Pause. Let me come to your office. I need to understand this." So I pulled into the assessor's office probably 2:30 that day in the afternoon, roughly, and went up to the assessor's office, and I said, you know, "I need some help understanding why I'm getting calls, why you're getting calls, why people are upset." And she said, "Well, I tried doing what the board motioned, but when I put the numbers in, it just came out too cheap, and I'm just not comfortable with how low the prices were." And I kind of was taken aback, and then she continued and said, "You know, Chandler, we haven't actually assessed that way since about 2001 or 2002 in Wells County, and I don't feel comfortable going back to that." I was taken aback again. And then she said, "Thirdly, you know, my system had a little difficulty in kind of overriding some of the things, and, you know, it just became a whole thing. So I'm just gonna, you know, oh, and by the way, I had gotten ahold of Judy Affolder over the last couple of days and had her come up here to my office like we're doing now." And I kind of went over this with Judy and explained to her kind of what I was thinking, and she agreed with me, and so we just went ahead and had new assessments created that we mailed out then. I was taken aback a third time. I said, "Kelly, this is absolutely not how the law works. This is not how the process works. This is not, you have no authority to override a PETA BOA decision that you disagree with." And she said, "Well, Chandler, now the taxpayers can appeal to the state." And I said, "They had a win. Why do they appeal?" And she said, "Well, it's just how the system works. They can appeal to the state now." I stood up and left because I was just blown away that I'm witnessing this going on. I left, and I called Larry McChesney, the other board member, and I said, "Larry," I said, "are you aware of this going on?" And his response to me blew me away again. "Well, Chandler," he said, "I tell you what. He said, "You know, I never thought we should have gone less than 25 a square." "You know, Chandler, if you want to poke a hornet's nest and make a big thing here..." I said, "Larry," I said, "you are an appointed board member that made a motion that you're telling me now, a week later, you didn't actually agree with or want to do in the first place, and you seconded my other three motions." I said, "How are taxpayers supposed to know what their rates are now? Because we've got different assessments." "Well, you know, Chandler, just don't poke a hornet's nest," and I hang up the call. At this point now, I'm really, I'm getting people calling me over the last few days as they're hearing about this, asking me what's going on because I'm the only board member that's from Wells County. So nobody has anybody else to get ahold of, and when they do, if they do get ahold of them, they don't care anyways because they've been convinced now by Ms. Herman that they were wrong and they needed to change their vote and didn't do it correctly. And so, you know, I was just blown away. So I said, "Well, I need to go get a copy of the minutes just to clarify this." And I found out that, oh, the meeting actually, the recorder didn't work. We actually don't have a copy of the meeting recorded because I couldn't get the right button figured out, and so we have no audio of the meeting. I said, "Well, at least give me a copy of the minutes." So I get the minutes, and the minutes are inaccurate. The minutes say that the motion was from $24 a square foot to 22 a square foot, and then it ends there. There's no mention of the depreciation. There's no mention of the market factor. It's not, the minutes are inaccurate. And so, you know, over the next several days then, you know, I continue to get more calls, and I'm on this board for, you know, less than a month. I'm trying to sift all this through and make sense of it, and it just, it's not making sense to me. And then finally, I got an email. I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. I called the DGLF, which is the governing body out of Indianapolis, over assessor's offices, and I ran by their legal department, "What are we doing here?" And she said, "Oh, my goodness. I've never heard of this. The assessor has no authority to override the board. This is totally out of control." And she actually met with Judy Affolder and Kelly Herman over the following days down in Indianapolis.
Who's she?
Her name is Jennifer in the legal department from DGLF. And I then got an email a few days later from Kelly stating that she is out of town and hopes to be back in the office soon, but needs to schedule a redo session of the hearing because there's confusion on what values we agreed to. The board members are confused. The recording didn't work. There's just, there's reasons why she needed to get back together and have a redo of the meeting. At this point, I am genuinely just confused about what in the world is going on. So I emailed the commissioners and Mr. Andrews just to get this out of my hands because taxpayers are upset. I'm caught in the middle. This is totally things that I'm seeing that are totally out of control. And I just laid out that there is no confusion over what the motions were. There was no confusion. The confusion was over the enforcement of the motions. And then, lo and behold, a few days later, if you go on the Beacon website right now, you see on these parcels a new assessment that says per PETA BOA decision, and it's substantially lower than the ones that had been mailed out previously. So there was no confusion on what the motions were. They were not willing to enforce the motions. And at this point, I thought, "Well, great. Now we finally have this circus done. We're good now." Until last week on Monday, I get an email from Kelly to the board members, myself and Mr. Andrews, stating that she is calling a PETA BOA session on the 14th of February, which is next week on Monday, to redo the session that we had previously done because she said she had been confused on what to put on the minutes. Her recording didn't work. The board members were confused. And so she was gonna list options A, B, C, and D that we could vote on as a board for the values.
Is that why you have a ballot?
No. It's supposed to be an independent board. We talk and debate. She's not even supposed to talk at these meetings.
Right.
But she said right here, she's gonna present option A, B, C, and D, and then we can choose from one of those four, and then she'll mail them out again after that, which again, is totally ridiculous and not appropriate at all for an independent board to be put in that position. And so now the taxpayers are saying, "We spent a year preparing, studying, paying money, all these things. We win our appeal, and now because of all these things that I just mentioned, we're gonna go back and redo the hearing with the same board and the same assessor sitting there, except now we know the assessors talked to the other two board members, and they've completely shifted their mentality, and so now they're gonna lose the second hearing." And so the taxpayers are saying, "How many cracks at this do we have to go through? We won and did this through the law and won the process, and now we've got to go back into a surefire loss because of whatever reason." And so as a board member, I don't know what to do on this. I'm caught in the middle. It feels totally out of control, not how our government should work and operate. I feel like the taxpayers are not getting a fair shake at all. In fact, we've proven that if the taxpayers by chance win an appeal, they're actually not gonna win. And then in the example of a couple of them, they're actually gonna be punished by getting higher appraisals yet than what they went into the meeting for, just as a kind of extra kick in the shin on the way out. So I defer this to you guys. I just am highly concerned. Like I said, the next PETA BOA meeting is supposed to, I guess evidently, be scheduled next week on Monday. I feel like that is totally inappropriate. It does not put the taxpayers in a good spot at all, and I guess I'm gonna leave it there for you guys if you have questions or whatever.
Chandler, thank you for bringing this to our attention. What I would add is that, you know, the assessor here in Wells County is an elected official just like I am or the other commissioners are. We don't have any direct authority over her, but what we...
Yeah. I need to get ahold of the woman I spoke with and make sure we have everything on our end. In order to do that, that should be a pretty quick study to figure out, and I can distribute that. But regardless, it certainly would be the suggestion as a lawyer that we shouldn't be doing anything, and that would be my suggestion to the board as well. And you're a member of that. So, you're independent. You do what you think is right. But this could get worse if there are things that are bad already.
Yeah. And I talked to the DGLF. Again, she called me last week actually, Thursday or Friday, and she just said, "Chandler," she said, "we have reviewed this at length this morning." She said, "We have decided that we've kind of come to the end of our authority on this. We would defer this now to the county attorney and prosecutor for further review." And so, yeah, again, I can get you her number if you want to call her directly. I have Jennifer's office number. So, I'd be happy to get that to you.
Based on your conversation, so the, and I have in front of me the, I just pulled up one of the properties you referred to. The PETA Boa Determination Form 115 on January the 25th was reduced, wasn't reduced to the amount that you guys as a board would have put it at?
That's a great question.
Or is it not quite what it is, or more than what it was, do you recommend?
The answer is, I really have no idea. Because at this point, I just, there's no way for me to verify exactly what formula she put in. It's lower. It's less than what the other board...
I can see that it's lower.
But I don't know if it should be even less, or it should be high. I mean, I just don't know because I don't have access to her computer files.
And you being on that board should be aware of that.
Yeah. And I just have no idea. I just don't know is the answer that I would have to give you, and I wish I did.
Yeah. Because you absolutely, you folks absolutely have the authority to tell her exactly what it needs to be, and she has to execute that after.
Correct.
And there's nowhere else for anyone else to go. I understand what you're saying. That's definitely a quorum. So, I would entertain a motion to suspend that board until a further investigation. I don't think we can do that.
I don't think, I don't think.
That's what I'm asking.
I'd like to talk to the DGLF about that before. They are, they're appointed. They do have, they have a term that they're appointed to. They are independent. I'd say they're quasi-independent in a lot of ways. So...
We can't do this though, Colin. I don't think, I know we cannot determine whether the board can meet or not. That's not in our purview. But I do know that we can remove our two positions temporarily, pull those off so there is no access to a board.
To a quorum.
So, I think that's what we need to do. That would be the same thing, would it not?
It would if you didn't have a quorum. I believe they would have the right to, and notice an opportunity to be heard on that, though. That would have to be at a public meeting where they would be able to present their case.
That would then delay this for a month at least, so we have time to investigate.
That's where we're at, yeah.
Well, then, I think that's what we should do. We want to make sure that we get all the facts. We hear Mrs. Herman's side. But I think with the allegations that, and it's up to you, Colin, your representatives, but does this need to go not just to the DGLF and you and the prosecutor, but does this need to go to the state level and the AG? Because there are some accusations here that are, if they're leveled, they're pretty high.
My understanding is that one of the taxpayers did contact the Attorney General's Solicitor General's office, so they're aware of it as well. I don't know what's coming from that yet, but I assume we'll hear something.
So, I'll make the motion that we remove our two appointees from the PETA Boa board until we have time to review, or Colin has time to review, what our next steps are up to, including talking to the DGLF, interviewing the assessor, and if needed, going to the AG.
My understanding, you're saying basically a temporary suspension, not a removal, but a suspension.
Right. Suspension.
This is new, and I don't, this is a unique situation, so I'm not quite sure where we're at on that. But certainly, I'll support the county and do my best to advise you. And if we need to switch course, we can do that.
I'll say suspension and up to removal if that's what we need to do. But I think there's three things, Colin, that we should, we should look at here is, one, is the assessor in line or out of line? Make sure that we're clear what the PETA Boa board has. But I also think that if we have a violation of a quorum where the other members of the PETA Boa met with the assessor, that we step back and look at those members. I know we have one, and the county council has one. Do we review if they should continue to be members if they broke the quorum policy?
Right. And if that happened, then we're talking about removal for cause, which would require a full hearing.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor now?
I just don't want to get ourselves in a bind. I support the premise. I'm just concerned that legally, if we're allowed to do what...
Well, let's put it upon Colin verifying that legally.
If you say that, I have no problem with that.
That would be... So, the motion would be do exactly as I said with Colin verifying that we can make that motion.
Absolutely. I'll second that. No hurry.
I'll get a memorandum on that as soon as...
Okay.
You on favor, Ray?
Aye.